Order. Thank you. Was that Kristen that hit? Good job. We all have to click the got it and we'll move on. Good morning, everyone. Let's have our pledge of allegiance, please. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, justice for all. Thanks so much. Kristin, would you please do the roll?
Sure. Trustee Chen, present trustee Derry.
Lois. Lois, tell us you're here.
Here.
Trustee Molno.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Hollingsworth.
Here.
And Chairperson Domare.
Here.
Perfect.
Of course, we had the agenda posted. I'm curious if we had any public comments?
No, no public comment.
We received no public comments and Councilmember Yudi will not be joining us today. He sent me an email a little earlier. So we won't, we won't be having him join us as we normally do. I have to say, one of the things in looking at the minutes, we talked about fingers crossed that this meeting could be in person. And obviously this is not an in-person meeting and I'm very disappointed only because it's the final meeting for two of our illustrious board members, Liz Hollingsworth and Linda Molno. And I'm regretful that we're not in person to say goodbye to them. There's going to be a special city council meeting sometime in June or July where they're going to acknowledge all of the former board members, committee members and all that kind of stuff. So that's to come in person. That'll be your formal goodbye, but I have to take my chairman's report to thank you for your service. Both of you, your unfaltering passion for this library, your tireless dedication and attention to detail. Because both of you are such invaluable assets and repositories of knowledge and experience. I plan on calling on you again in the future as we move forward with this. And I wanted to express to you my sincere appreciation for the guidance and support that you give me for the past few years. So I want to just say thank you to Linda and Liz. We will be having an advisory board training that we got moved from this meeting till next month. The notion was, why should we have Liz and Linda trained on the new way, doing things where they won't be here? That'd be a waste of their time. And fingers crossed, we'll be having new board members coming in soon. So we can all get trained at one time. So we have, the interviews are starting tomorrow to add to our members here to replace the two that we're losing and to add our alternates. So that's going to be having, going to be happening after that. But that's the main thing that I want to touch upon, my gratitude to Linda and Liz. And to mention that the training will be going on and that's all I have. So let's move on to our other trustee reports. Lois, do you have anything you need to report?
I do not.
All right, Genevieve, how about you?
I do, but first of all, thank you so much for Liz taking me under her wing, taking me through the budget process, training me, and she's absolutely knowledgeable, valuable asset to the group. And thank you so much for giving me a lot of guidance.
It's a pleasure, Genevieve.
And we definitely gonna miss both of you. Felt like we have not, I feel like we've been forced to taking off the training wheels. So anyways, I went to the foundation meeting. I think we had two somehow. They have.
Well, we can get to, you know, that we can actually get to that later. If you don't have anything separate to that, that's agenda item number six for the foundation. So we can, we can jump on that then.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. But Linda, let's have you go next, our other library Linda.
Yes. I thank you for your kind words, Steve. I just, you know, reflecting this past weekend, knowing that this was going to be the last, the last time for meeting, not certainly not the last time I'll see most of you, but for in this particular capacity. And I, and I was thinking back was in March of 2014 that I had accepted an invitation from John Morris to take one of his trips to the Colorado River and inspect all of the Metropolitan Water District facilities. And while I was on that trip, his wife Sandy, who was a longtime trustee and a very strong supporter still of the library, had pretty much cornered me and said, you know, you need to submit this application because we really need you on the Board of Trustees. And she at the time was going to be termed off at the end of that year. And she, you know, she tried to tell me, you know, my academic experience would be such a great aid. That just the fact that I, you know, clearly from being a historian, I must like books. You don't get there if you, if you don't like reading, that's for sure. And so I did. And that I came on the board then that June, I guess it was when I had been asked by the city council and served for two years as an alternate and then six years as a trustee. I intend to keep the Crowe Library very close. Even as I term off of the board, I, you know, Sandy really hit the nail on the head when she said, you must love books. Because some of my earliest childhood memories are going to a bookmobile that would park a block and a half away from my parents' house. And I couldn't have been any more than three or four years old. But I remember stepping up into that bus and it was like going into this world of fantasy. And then I have, I have other memories of our, the city library in where I grew up. And the one that pop, that comes into mind, I mean, it, all of these memories include aromas of dust and old paper. And probably why I really enjoyed, you know, finding a quiet corner in the, in the library when I was in college to do my studying. I just, I did well with those, the smell of the old books. But I remember, I vividly remember walking in and looking for the next book in the Little House on the Prairie series. For some reason, that one is the one that comes to mind. I don't know why, but it clearly had an impact. I, as far as what I'm going to do with the library, I'm going to stay on the Crane Art Gallery Committee. They've asked me to take the position of local artist that was formerly held by Eva Marguerite from the beginning. And, you know, I'm interested in the Friends program. You know, it's entirely possible you might see me in the bookshop someday. I don't plan to go very far. I do plan to do a lot of traveling and hopefully you have fingers are crossed that nothing's going to make me cancel the trips that I have planned for this year. Speaking of which, I will most likely not be here when the city council has their meeting. Unless it's very early June, which I doubt, but I'll be leaving for the UK and right after Father's Day, and I won't be back until about the third week of, end of the third week of July. So it's, it's time.
Wanderlust.
Yes. And, and I have to give my, my thanks and kudos to Liz because we have been quite a team, I think, for quite a few years here, supporting each other. And it was, I know with the years that I served as chair, I was just so grateful to have Liz as vice chair. It, it made all the difference. It made the, it made the, the job. It made everything work. You know, all of the gears were meshing, so to speak.
Thank you.
Then that's about all I have to say for now.
Thanks.
I just want to add a few more things. I mean, I didn't get to work with you a lot, but I'm so impressed every time that you know so much, so knowledgeable about the rules, laws, regulations, whether the board's duty in terms of legal terms. I don't know, how are we supposed to carry on without all the, knowing all the detail on the laws? I felt like that part were a little missing. Are you gonna be our counsel on the side?
You know, I, it, that actually brings to mind something that was very, very much a big part of the many, many, many years that I spent in PTA. And I'm sure that Liz is, is familiar with this from her position as principal over at Carver. The, when you kind of transitioned into being a PTA president generally, in most cases, you were a vice president in some capacity first and then, and then president. And the following year, you served as parliamentarian, which basically meant you were the outgoing person that had the information in their head. And, you know, I don't think that's a bad idea. I thought it was, I think it was a pretty good setup for, for PTA. And, and I know other organizations do things like that. But, you know, if I'm in town and you have questions, I'm more than happy to try and, try and give you an answer, or at least, or give you a suggestion.
I believe I said I was gonna get their guidance in the future. I think I said.
So you're gonna be the phone a friend. That's our.
Thanks, Linda. Liz, what do you have to report?
I think we're finally at a point where we have such knowledgeable staff. And Genevieve, I think you'll know to ask even the question. And Kathy or Linda will know. And some of that legal stuff is in the notebook. And it's just kind of hard to believe it's my last meeting. It's really been a privilege to be on the board since 2016. I love the library. And I think that reading is the most important gift that we can give children and adults too. I hope the trustees will continue to support the staff, especially in this time of really low staffing levels. And I know you'll continue to monitor the budget. And I just encourage all of us, the current trustees, the outgoing trustees, the new trustees, to be liaisons within our community with the many supporters of the library to keep that support so strong. And to the many donors to our library to keep those donations so strong. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Liz. And just as a closing thing, I just wanted to say anything that I do right as a chair is because of you and Linda. So having, having watched you guys do this, I know kind of how to do it. I'll get better at it, but thanks for being terrific models.
You're doing a great job, Steve.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think we're leaving the, the board in good hands, Steve.
You're very kind. Thanks. All right, let's move on to number three, the Crane Art Gallery Liaison Report. Linda.
I don't have a whole, I don't really have anything new to say other than, you know, the exhibit is up right now, April Drew Foster. If you haven't seen it, go in. She's a wonderful watercolor artist. I think she has a couple of her oil paintings also. She works in, in quite a few different media. I, at this part of her life, it's, it's, she's focusing mostly on watercolors. But she's had a very long, long history of being an artist. I would recommend to the, to the trustees, when artists come in and if they have receptions that are open to the public, and they generally do, and April did have one a couple of weeks ago, it fell on Mother's Day. It worked out nicely. Go and, you know, put on your little, you know, trustee badge and, and represent the, represent the library and show that, show them that the artist and their, their family and friends that we care. The reception that, that April had went very, very nicely. We've tried, we, they, she followed the rules with the little bottles of water and the packaged snacks, which, you know, in some ways, actually, I think it turned out to be easier to do than having all of these wonderful homemade goodies that we've been used to in the past. She, I don't, I do not know exactly what she sold. I know that she did sell at one or two. I'm not sure if it was more than that or not. We are still, the committee is still looking into some kind of signage and it could be a sandwich board type of thing, but something that we can put out when an artist has a reception to make sure that people know where, where, where to head themselves. And also the, to let people know that the art hanging in the, in the hallway is that of an artist. And to, to give them some insight into that. I know that Linda Lyons is in the process of buying, we, you know, we need some new light bulbs for some of the, you know, the lighting over the paintings. That's a rather small investment, but that will be, she'll be taking care of that. We did, we did notice when we were setting up for April's reception that it might be nice if we maybe had another easel or two floor easels. And again, that would not be a major expenditure, but something that, that we're looking into. And, you know, I, at this point, no, no real issues. I person, on a personal level, I will say that I was very pleased to see the, the marketing, the publicity for this artist's exhibit. It's, this is the best I've seen. And, you know, just whoever is responsible, and I know Linda Lyons had, had, had something to do with it too. But I just wanted to say, you know, I, we've talked so much about publicity and lack of publicity. It was truly a pleasure to be able to say, to call up April and say, hey, look what I found. It, you know, and, and that was, that was really nice. And I hope I, that, that that is, is kept up.
Linda, the donations or excuse me, the sales of artwork on our donations monitor, it looks like there's about $2,000 that those two artists donated as a result of the sales.
Yeah, the majority of it was from Marie Macduffie.
It's wonderful. And I, I don't remember those kind of numbers in the past. So it really shows the number of patrons and guests who came through.
Well, and where we've, where we've seen the donations come in, they come in when an artist has a reception. Those in-person receptions are incredibly valuable. People don't just think, well, let's see, I woke up this morning, what am I going to do? I'm going to go down to the library and look and see if there's a painting I like. You know, that just doesn't happen. Or you, you know, you're wandering down the hallway and you might be looking at the paintings and thinking, oh, wow, this is great. That might look nice in my house. And then you go on and, and do something else. But if you're at a reception and people are talking about the paintings, it's, 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 it helps. It really does in, in putting it out there that yes, this is for sale. And yes, if you do have a spot that you think that would be just perfect, you can buy it. And that's really important.
Kathy, I saw you had your hand up. Did you wanna?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Linda, thank you for mentioning the marketing. I'd like to give credit and appreciation to Kristen and Linda who made sure that as we manage all the programming at the library, that we do continue to make sure that workflow is there, that we can push these promotions out through the city managers weekly update and then our social media channels. And then we continue to enhance the communication in the activity guide. I don't know if anybody noticed the back page of the activity guide. If anybody has a, has their copy nearby. I created this ad as a standing ad for the art gallery itself. Look at the back page, the, the absolute. Yep, at the bottom. So that would be a standing presence just to be, help the community, you know, remind them or bring awareness that we have an art gallery. So we're going to continue to do this. It'll be a standing presence within the guide. And then we will continue as the artists, you know, transitioning in and out, we will absolutely support those receptions and use every channel we can to get the word out. And, and I just want to thank Kristen and Linda. And then we are developing greater workflows, better workflows within our department. So we can push it out, whether it be what we can control or the city hall with the city managers weekly update.
Yeah. I, just one thing Kathy, on the, on the social media, I was looking at the numbers in the report. And they, they look, the numbers on, for Facebook look really good. And I, I see them, I see the library postings on Instagram. But even though I have liked the, the library on Facebook, it never pops up on my newsfeed. And their algorithms are so bizarre.
And you're following them? You definitely hit that follow.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And but, yeah, for some reason.
Yeah, sometimes they change on that. I know what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I just, I wouldn't rely heavily on Facebook.
Well, we practice the followers mainly, but not, not as, I know, we, we have to maximize all of our channels.
Right.
And Linda, I think you bring up a terrific point about as trustees showing up to support these receptions. And I'll, I'll make sure I try and do that better in the future. I really think that the Crane Art Gallery is a jewel. It's, it is part of the library, but it's a separate entity too. And I, and I look forward to working with you as we, as we move ahead to try and get more attention for it. And, you know, have you visited the art gallery lately? No, 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 not the Huntington, the one that's in the Crowe. Because it's, it's a terrific thing to have. And I love the, the, especially the last few exhibitions we've had, but maybe it's more to my taste. Really some terrific stuff. So, so thank you. And I'm glad you're, you're going to be, continue to be involved in, in that project. It's very worthwhile.
Thank you.
Um, we'll move on to agenda item number four, the San Marino Center renovation update report, which is me. Ken is not here unfortunately, because I was relying on him to show you the photos of the renderings. We had our meeting less than two weeks ago, our, our final meeting of the task force, allegedly, to go over the final plans and, and that they had for us. The preservation architect Kelly McLeod was there, as she has been for the last couple of meetings, she and her firm, to make sure that everything's compliant and looking good. So we made some final minor tweaks to it, moving the, there was a monument that they, they had out in front that we kind of changed the side, the, the positioning of that, so it would be more attractive to the street. And I also advocated for the font on that monument not to be the same as what's on the San Marino Center right now, which were, they look like store bought letters that were put out there. No one on this call is responsible for it, so I can say it. So, but instead to have the same font match the libraries. So the same signage that's on the Crowe Public Library should be reflective on the San Marino Center to tie it together as a campus. So as, as a marketing guy, I was kind of pushing for that. But we're, we're excited that we're now in the final stage and it's going to be presented to city council on June 8th at 6:00 PM. I highly encourage everyone to attend that meeting. If you can do it in person, I will be there in person. Great if you could be there in person. If not, please attend via Zoom because it's not a for sure thing that the project's going to move forward. We, we need the, that public support to make sure that it's going to happen. So we want this to move forward without delay, any delay in, in the project and, you know, changes and all this kind of stuff. What about this? Might, might kind of put the whole kibosh on there. So I, I would love to see the, the San Marino Center move forward without further delay and be the wonderful compliment to our beautiful library. So as far as my concern is, we've done the work to try and make it look complimentary, all the same look, especially from the rear as we approach it. And I think it's going to be a really terrific structure that's going to be enjoyed by the members of the community, community for years and years to come. So if you can make June 8th, 6:00 PM at the city council, it's in the San Marino Center. I think you know where that is. That's, that's if it's the same, again, I wish I had the photos to show you. I, I, Ken had those, but, but it, it looks really nice. It's going to be a lovely compliment. Um, let's move on. Friends of the Crowe Public Library Liaison Report.
I, I really don't have anything to say other than I went to the meeting that I thought was going to be outside and it got moved inside and I didn't realize it, but maybe it had, had been canceled. So, and I was hoping to get their minutes before, before we met so that I could, could pass something along. But I didn't. So that, that is another area, Steve, that you're going to need to find somebody to be.
Yes. Exactly. And we'll, and we'll see who gets appointed to the board and we can select from that.
Lois is raising her hand.
Dave.
Oh, thank you, Lois. I appreciate that. Thank you. One thing I did want to mention, I don't, did anyone else get the, the mailer from the friends? The, the soliciting mailer there? Okay. So I was a little surprised. On that, it wasn't signed by anybody, just says the signature. So there was no signature at the bottom, so I don't have anyone to go to. But I was surprised at the, the last line in the second paragraph that says, "The Friends solely funded the new self-checkout kiosks installed in the Crowe Library last year." Which is not true because the foundation did that. So I'm, I'm, I don't know who's fact checking what they're putting out. But I'm a little bit concerned about that because I don't want to offend the foundation people who put up $50,000 for that.
I did not look at it that closely, Steve. I, I will, but I will pass that on.
Okay. Thanks, Linda. Appreciate it. Yeah, Kathy.
Um, that, in that same letter, when you had asked, you know, who's fact checking? I think the previous sentence or the front half of that sentence also talks about the library operating budget or the, and I don't have it in front of me, but that, that particular statistic isn't accurate either. So we would appreciate if they're going to make a mention about a budget that we manage that they verify with the entities, that, that would be appreciative. So, uh, you know, we, we plan to send that, that request in the future from city staff.
That really goes to the importance of your efforts to bring better communication and better working relationships between the three groups.
I agree, Liz. And having Linda involved in there is going to be greatly helpful. And my other feeling is, as a longtime San Marino resident, everybody was a friend of the library. It's like, and I don't, and I know that membership has been dwindling. And I want to do a campaign where everybody joins. You're, everyone's a friend of the library. You're just kind of like, what, what you do? So I would love to see that happen as well. But I don't want to be upsetting anybody on the foundation who's like, wait a minute. We, we did this and they're taking all the credit. So I want to make sure that we don't, we have two library support groups to do a great job. And I want to make sure that we, we are working harmoniously together.
I will, I will contact the, the friend board and let them know.
Thanks, Linda. Appreciate it. All right, Genevieve, let's move on to the Seminole Public Library Foundation Liaison Report.
That note, the next meeting, do I need to voluntarily bring this up to their attention so we're aware of this or let's? Okay.
I let sleeping dogs lie. I don't, I don't think it either.
Just be prepared.
Where, they are aware.
They are aware. Okay.
Okay.
I know. They get the mailer too, Genevieve, so.
Okay. Well, just in case that if someone did not pay attention to read everything. I went to the two meetings and very, very fun group and hardworking group, talented, absolutely talented. And Cindy has been working diligently. And I think tentatively, this is what they're gonna call it, the libation, literary libration. That's the most popular idea at current point. And it could still change, but I think they're running with this for the time being. And they're talking about increasing the pricing for. And they're talking about increasing the pricing for the tickets. And that's not a set in stone. They're still trying to figure it out based on Carver's parent party pricing and all the costs of living, you know, inflation and not inflation. So, but they are planning on, I think it's October 15th. Am I right, Kathy?
I think that, I know Cindy didn't lock in a date with us yet, but I do believe she said October. And that kind of does stick in my memory, but she has not confirmed with us yet.
Right. Because initially they had several dates bouncing around. And I did say, I think Crane Gallery really need to know ahead of time for the display and all that. So a date might be important to let everyone have enough time to prepare and all that. So I think tentatively it's October 15th, but it's not set in stone. And they are very excited that Kathy is willing to help them along. Advertising, offering the back page of the program. And with the group, I don't know, should I spill the beans or this is already in the talks? They're really hoping for the front page advertising.
That's, you know, the beauty of this, this publication is that Community Services, it's our guide. And for all intents and purposes, I am the editor and I do manage all of the content. And so absolutely, you know, we, the council has supported the new direction for this guide. And I, there's absolutely no reason that we can't showcase them on the front cover and then even given them, give them more space on the inside. Absolutely. So.
Yeah, they were thrilled that they were, you were already offering the back page. But someone said front page would get a little more attention. And I mean, I agree.
It's always a balance because, but, but, you know, this is an important event and fundraiser for the library and absolutely justifies the highest level, you know. So we'll, we'll put our heads together and it'll be a great, it'll be a great high profile in the guide. We do have some deadlines and I'll work with Cindy on that.
Yeah, if she hasn't contacted you, she probably will because.
Oh, we talk, we talk every week. So.
Good, 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 good.
Yeah. And I'm actually meeting with Hal, meeting with Hal tomorrow. So.
Oh, yeah, he's another one. And then that's one important, I mean, that is like the event for the fundraising. That's the biggest one. And then the dumpling party, I think Linda went, right?
I did not go to this one, but I went to the first one they had and it was fabulous. I mean, it was so much fun.
The, the reason I didn't want to go is I know if I go, I'm going to gain two pounds the next day on those type. I'm just those type. I will put on two pounds. But they look fantastic. I think they had another good turnout. Don't have the detail on, because that just happened. On the day of the meeting, they were, I mean, a group of them were prepping for the dumpling making next day. So we actually saw some preparation in progress during the meeting. And it certainly looked very fun, so much food. And so that's another fundraising. I think it went well. I think it went well. I haven't heard the number. It looks like there's a lot of energy and I've seen the little pictures on Facebook posting. And I probably will be reporting next meeting in terms of how much they brought in. But Steve probably gets that number before me. So that's the other thing. And then they have a new officer, I think, approved. And he is current Chinese Club president or vice president, something like that.
Liz, unmute yourself, Liz. Jump in.
Sean, it's Sean Cho.
Yeah, I don't think I know him personally, but probably seen his face on different occasions. So, but he wasn't there when they nominated him. And so that's pretty much it. But the whole literary libation is going to sound so fun. And I, I'm just blown away and they are going to pick some books and try to get inspired with what might be able to go with that. And so we'll see. That concludes.
Genevieve, I just have one comment. If you would be so kind to bring this back to the foundation. And as they're getting ready for the fundraiser, I think if they have a project in mind that they can advertise with this fundraiser, they're going to be even more successful. We've seen that time after time with all the different organizations in town, be it Rotary, the schools, the foundation. When they know, for instance, when the foundation was paying for the public area computers in the library, they were able to advertise, this is what we're raising money for. And I think that is much more successful. That being said, staff, I think you're going to need to get ready for that. And as I see the donations monitor, we're not spending all the donations that we're getting. And that, we got to get ready for that.
I do have an update on that specifically, Liz. Cindy did come to us and talk about a project, so you'll be pleased to know that she has that on her radar to be able to campaign as part of the campaign, mention a project. And we do have a few in mind. Linda and I have got some thoughts. So we have been talking to her exactly about, you know, something that could, that is kind of larger in scale. And so.
So before they do that, this board needs to give their blessing to that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the more tangible, the more concrete it is, the better off. People go, I, we're raising money for this thing. We could picture, you know, just go to support programs. That's too big. It has to be something more specific. So as you well know.
So we have to build that into previous, because by the time they start advertising for this, it'll probably be, you know, September. So we'll probably need to bring it to the board in August, July or August.
That's why we've tried to maintain that capital projects list. It wasn't just for what was going to the city council for CIPs. It was a list of big projects for any entity to help fund. And that way, we didn't get a group, like the friends or somebody, the foundation or a private donor saying, let's put a big fountain in the courtyard and here's the money. That might be a lovely project, but that's not a priority for the library. Or I let a jacuzzi outside of the friends, you know, store. So that, that's why keeping that list of projects and the big ideas that Linda and Kathy have on that list is really important.
Genevieve, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was thinking, should that be one major project versus a list of things that we're working towards?
Focus. What, you're focusing on one thing?
Bigger item is probably going to generate more, right?
Well, yeah, well, singular focus is what's good. And the old saying is, specific is terrific, vague is the plague. If you don't know what it is you're doing. You like that one? Yeah. So if you can focus everybody on it, this is what we're doing, then that's going to be more effective.
So that would be, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Go ahead.
So when should we try to narrow down the specific project that the library needs? And it's not a city sponsored item and we need to relate that message back to the foundation.
Well, I think if I could chime in, I, I think I'm trying to do that exact thing is, is timeline this. It's, and, and we will work with Cindy and, and as well as Marcella. And because if it's any, any capital improvement needs to be sort of approved by, you know, city administration first and last, if you will, then we bring it to our stakeholder groups. And so I'm thinking, you know, July, August, because she's going to need to prepare the campaign. So it's got to probably be June, July, August at the latest, right, Liz? Are you thinking?
Well, you're going to finish the budget this week, I hope, right?
Yeah.
And so, and you don't meet in Ju- August or July? Those ones, I forget. So I think you're right. I think it needs to be your July or August date to this group.
Right.
So that the foundation can go ahead and prepare their materials.
Right. Yeah, I'll, I'll get my arms around that here in the next coming weeks.
Yeah, I was just going to jump in and say, obviously the, the funding is needed to do, as the Seminole community knows, whether it be schools or whatever, extra funding is needed to have that quality of life that we're looking for. That's part of it. But also what we're doing here is we're building community. And of course, that's what Kathy's title is. When we have events like Delicious Destinations or Literary Libations, we are bringing the community together. And that enhances, I mean, it's great to raise money and have those things. But that sense of community is what we're all about, whether it be concerts in the park that the foundation did, that the schools foundation did. All these things, this is what makes living in San Marino terrific, when you get together with your friends and neighbors and, and have a good time. So it's really important we focus on what it is we're trying to pay for and that the event's a success. We market it correctly, but the guiding light all along here is community. We want to make sure that people come together and have a good time. And, and thanks to the foundation for doing that. And Kathy, thanks for you and your team moving this along. And Genevieve, thanks for, for being the liaison for the foundation as, as they continue to support us. Anything else, Genevieve?
That concludes my report. And thank you for appointing me that position. I've been attending all the meetings so far, 100%.
It's a nice group of people and, and thank you for volunteering for that. I really appreciate your volunteering for that position. Very important. People show up for meetings, otherwise you get volunteered for stuff. Let's move on to item number seven, our new business approval of minutes.
That we approved the minutes from April 11th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Any discussion on, on the minutes? Any comments? Nothing? All right. Let's take a vote on it, please.
Trustee Chen?
Yes.
Trustee Derry?
Yes.
Trustee Mollnow?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Hollingsworth?
Yes.
And Chairperson Domire?
Yes.
Perfect.
Let's move. Thank, thank you so much. Let's move on then to item number eight, the Director and City Librarian Report. Look, 8:45, we did it. I was even trying to rush and we, we got it right on. Okay, go Kathy.
There you go, Steve. Yeah, good morning, everybody. Glad to see that we have a full meeting today because Liz and Linda absolutely deserve the, the utmost of support and, and praise as they, as they leave a, a wonderful mark on this board. While Linda and I, and I won't really speak for Linda, but I think I can a little bit. You know, we've only known you for a few months, but, but you, Liz, you were so instrumental when Kristen and I first joined the city team. It was a difficult time for the division and the library. And, you know, without your, without your intervention and you, you came in and you really, really helped us to understand. We had nobody training us or providing us any orientation, but you were that person for us. You were our guiding light for several months and we, we can't thank you. I, I, you put us on the right path and kept us in the lane that we needed to be to serve the division and the team here as well as the board. And, 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 and as well as making all those introductions to the foundation as staff to these, these important community bodies that guide the library. So thank you so much, Linda. You, you know, you're, you have a phenomenal legacy as, as, as Liz does. You guys have wonderful reputations and we will try to do you proud as we are, become the stewards from the city staff side. You've left a great foundation for us. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts to you guys for everything you've done. And I, I think we are on the right path. I definitely think we're on the right path. The second thing I want to mention has to do with, before I get into my report, it has to do with Genevieve. Please do not fear. We have the city clerk as well as the city attorney that really helped guide the, all boards and commissions to make certain that, number one, we get, and you guys as, as volunteers, you get, you know, proper training on responsibilities, duties, that, you know, board decorum. The, the, the agendas listed here, they're going to talk a little bit about the Browns Act. And then really positional authority. So if, 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 if city staff and the board, we come to a point where we, we're not really certain. We have paid city staff people that make sure that our boards and commissions stay within their positional authority. So no, no worries. And we'll jump right in and, and we'll learn all along the way together as we're faced with, you know, various decisions. So I just wanted to mention that. There's, there's a lot, there's an army behind us that, that get paid to do this and make sure we, we don't get ourselves in trouble. So anyway, so on to our written report and I won't, I hope you all have a chance to read it. The first item on there under discussion were some personnel updates. We could not be more thrilled that we have offered the position, the full-time position that's been vacant for several months to a lovely individual. I unfortunately cannot state their name yet and disclose that because this person is in the process of transitioning out from their previous position. And, and until, you know, we're, we're really ironclad on this thing, a lot of things can happen. There will be a relocation involved. So that's why there is a delay in the person onboarding. But we could not be more thrilled that we found the right person. And we will be excited to share who that is and announce that in the upcoming weeks as July 5th gets closer. The second bullet point under personnel updates is really more somber. It is reality. Agencies go through chapters of, of their, you know, evolution. We are, we are certainly experiencing on the full-time side, onboarding Linda, you know, as the new library manager. Her title will be changing as soon as the budget's adopted, city librarian. So Linda's been doing a phenomenal job. We get that part, that full-time, our full-time librarian position filled. But the next level of operation that really supports the day-to-day muscle is our part-time group. Well, as, as the report shows, for lots of various reasons, we've had a fair amount of turnover, which then really puts a strain on the operation. So I share this because it, it, we are hoping that it does not impact service, that customers still feel like they're supported, the telephone gets answered in a timely manner. And that nobody knows behind the scenes, we are really thin-staffed. But, you know, if we get, if we dip much lower, you know, it's going to be really hard to maintain. And I, and I'm not saying we're going to do this, but it may get so critical that we may have to look at modifying our operating hours because we just won't have a team to field, to put on the field. Linda?
Kathy, I'm just, I, I'm, I, I probably should know this, but the positions, the part-time positions you're talking about, can they be filled by somebody that does not have specific library training? Or do?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, no. Linda, you can unmute yourself. I don't want to. Unfortunately, unfortunately, no. Linda, you can unmute yourself. I don't want to, I don't want to. You know, appear like I am the expert in the room. I'm learning. But Linda tells me, and I, and I understand, as I, as I learn the technical aspect of managing the day-to-day. Areas of the library, if we do not have the reference desk covered. With the, with a librarian-trained librarian, whether it's a part-time or a full-time. Then, then that is not a good, that's not a good level of service, correct, Linda?
Yeah, so even for the paraprofessionals, for the part-time library assistants. Really ideally, these would be people who do have a background and a passion for library service. So because they're already going to have an understanding of in general how libraries work. And it'll make it easier for us to train them in reference work. So it's not ideal to put someone on the reference desk, whether professional or paraprofessional. Who doesn't understand that what it requires is a commitment to customer service. And have, you know, some sort of working knowledge of the processes and procedures. That will affect the services that they're then offering to the community. Those positions also, the paraprofessional positions provide program support. So they, they have to, you know, have an understanding of budgets and, and how, how to implement programming. So it's. It's not the same as hiring a clerk where there's an assumption that if they have the right customer service attitude. And they're trainable, we can take them on. It's just a different level.
But we do have, we have some game plans. We do, we are working with HR to get recruitments out as fast as possible. We're also working to take some, some longstanding clerks possibly. Okay, we just had to get this approved by the city administration that we upgrade them. Do a temporary upgrade, so we're not working them out of class. That we, that, and then Linda would train them on some core duties and responsibilities related to the reference desk. So that is something as a stopgap that we are trying to get approved hopefully this week. To, to at least make sure we, that we have enough people to fill all of the shifts seven days a week, so.
If you move, if you move some of those people up though, could you bring in untrained people to fulfill the jobs that, that don't need that training?
Yeah, if they apply, if they apply for jobs, clerk and page jobs, and we could backfill that way. And we start doing, you know, some developmental opportunities within, absolutely, that's hard, that would be, that would be awesome.
I just, I just, I guess what I'm wondering is if that's something that. Could be put out to the community. I, I, I have a friend that I walk with who just recently decided that, you know, retirement. And now that her husband's home retired too, she needed to get out. And she, and she ended up volunteering a day, one day a week up at Huntington Hospital. And, you know, I, I, I think there are people out there, you know, in this community.
Unfortunately, it can't be on a volunteer basis for many reasons. They have to be on city staff. So they have to take, absolutely, you know, to put their applications in. You know, we, and, and if they're willing to learn and, and want to start at the, you know, at the frontline level. The clerk, the page, circulation desk, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to presume to know how to recruit and hire and screen. I could probably figure it out, but that would be Linda and Jeff's job to get these people in the pipeline. And that is our goal. We, it is getting critical, and so, you know. With, I, I don't want to, I, if I don't have any more questions, I'll keep moving because we have a lot of information to cover, so, Liz?
I have two things on this topic. I think that this is part of the post-COVID hiring and employment market. That all kinds of businesses and industries are seeing. I think we have people who've been in the part-time world who are more interested in full-time work. And I know that that's a real tricky thing for you as staff to present to both the city manager and city council. But it can be done, and it can also be done with the support and pressure from this board of trustees. Should you go, wish to go forward in that direction?
We're probably going to need to do that next year, it, through the budget cycle. We're going to absolutely, I'm, I. I see that as absolutely a request. In the future budget submissions that we allow greater resources for part-time. Because, you know, eighty-five percent of the workforce here at the library as well as on rec and community is part-time. And it's too, there's too many competitive part-time jobs out there, and we have to compete. Thank you for mentioning that.
Are, are these jobs being advertised?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Liz had a second point.
That's a way that this board can always help support. In letting the city council representatives, whether as individuals or as a group. As Steve went to one of their meetings earlier and were really able to speak.
And he's batting a thousand.
He is, and, and I think the city council recognizes that we, as this board, are representative of the citizens of the community. A few years ago, because of budget, we analyzed closing the library on Sundays. It wasn't a budget strategy. It didn't save that much money. But in this regard of staffing, it might be a savings to you. Has, have you considered closing on Sundays for June and July?
Have. I proposed that to the city manager. It did not go well. She didn't feel that, that, I mean, she understands the plight. And we, she challenged us to come up with additional solutions, which we have. She's encouraged to not go there unless we absolutely have to, but yes, Liz, we are kicking that around. Because it's going to come down to, we just don't have the bodies, and.
I think that that is, I, I, I think also if we look at some of the. Well, Linda, do you think that that is the least used day? It's certainly the, the least number of hours.
Linda and I went, Linda and I arm wrestled over this one. Go ahead, Linda, unmute yourself.
Actually, we've been taking hourly headcounts to, to see how the building is being used on different days. Sundays are a, a busy day for sure, so we have hours where there are over fifty people in the building. The. It's interesting. It's interesting to look at the statistics and the use of, of the building. I think actually the eight to nine o'clock hour is when we have, generally speaking, less than ten individuals in the building. So just overall, I need to task someone with doing some data entry because we've been doing this for about a month now. And I have all of the statistics, but they need to be, you know, input so they can be properly analyzed. But, you know, this is one of the reasons why we, we started doing this is to sort of see how people are using us and when they're using us.
I think that analysis would be so important in looking at a long-term decision. But what I'm suggesting is just a short-term stopgap. And it seems, you know, a lot of things change around town in the summer months. The students aren't as active in using the library for that Sunday night, oops, I'm not ready for Monday. And I, I, I think that that would, it would feel, even at this point, to be. Kind of a new decision, but I think it's palatable, and I'm wondering what the other board members think.
I, I agree with Liz.
Genevieve, Lois, any thoughts?
On Sunday, eliminating operating hours temporarily through the summer, we had actually discussed through August. Because we know that that's, we're, we're just not going to have enough, you know, we're not going to have the hiring done. So that, I think that's the big question on the table, temporary Sunday closure.
Yeah, I'm pretty.
In, in August, so that would be the time to go back to a full-time.
I, I'm pretty confident that Linda and Kathy are going to come up with a solution that's palatable to the city manager and the community as well. I would, I would love, if possible, if, if I am going to be up here at the city council again. I'd love to have a list of what librarians, what duties are, because it, it's kind of like, a lot of parents discovered what teachers do. When the pandemic hit, they're like, oh my gosh, I, I have to do this. Liz knows, it's like, there's a million things that teachers do. And all parents see is, you know, this little bit of it. And same thing with grocery workers. We think they just do this. There's a whole bunch of stuff they do. Library, it's the same way. It wasn't like when the pandemic hit and we weren't having people come in, that all of a sudden librarians had nothing to do. You guys were still working hard and did shift duties and all that kind of stuff. So if I, if I can, or I'll maybe provide somebody to the board, just a quick list of some, kind of the stuff that goes on. Because in some people's minds, you just sit there and check out books, may have self-checkout now, so what's the big deal? Tons of behind-the-scenes stuff, that might be helpful to have. And I'll let you, Kathy, I know you've got a lot of stuff you want to cover, so I'll let you get back to that.
Okay, um, yeah, but thank you for your support. We, we really, I'm, I'm going to mention that, you know, we, we, we had this discussion. We hope we don't have to go there, but if, I, I do appreciate this, this, you know, that, that it was received and you guys understand. And that, yeah, we'll, we'll keep you posted as we get through the next month or two, because it's going to be really critical.
And then Linda has a bunch of friends who want to work at the library, so they're going to apply for jobs, so that's good. Thanks, Linda.
Jobs, send it to the city's HR page. Okay, so next we'll get on to our quarterly report for the operating budget. As well as the donations monitor, we, you have two sheets within your packets or digitally or delivered. Liz?
I didn't know you were done with your report.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
I have one other thing.
Oh, you have one other thing, my apologies.
It's about Story Walk. I really encourage you to launch in late September or early October. I really discourage you from trying to do it in June. You've got so many things with the summer reading program, hopefully onboarding a new reference librarian. And you, we've missed any opportunity for the school newsletters. There's only one left. It's this week, school is over this week. So you'd be able to use those school newsletters in the fall for publicity purposes. And the, most of the back-to-school activities for the children are right when school begins in August and early September. I just, with what we just talked about with the staffing issues, I really encourage you to postpone it. To a time where you can really give it its due. And I would think that at the earliest, late September or early October. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. And Linda, I'm, I see your head shaking. The other reason why we need to postpone this, which it's, it's happening, just so everybody knows, Story Walk. The Public Works Director position is also vacant. And so a lot of just day-to-day public works, streets, you know, stormwater, you know, capital projects, contracts. That's all fall into the project man, the Public Works Manager, who now is, is, it, it got swamped. So Story Walk got pushed back, so it falls in line with your recommendation, Liz. Okay, I see, Linda.
I have a question about the summer reading program. You don't have anything in your report. Here for today, and in looking at the, the guide that came in the mail, there's a little advertisement. You know, Summer Reading Club with some visuals, you know, opportunity drawings and et cetera, and some dates. But there's, there's, it, it doesn't, I don't know, I guess I was confused looking at it because it didn't really give me any information. Like, what do I tell my grandson that you, do you need to go to the library and sign up? You know, what exactly is going on? Because I, I don't, I haven't seen anything, may, and of course, if it came on Facebook, I wouldn't have.
So Linda, that's a great question. If we could just hold that, I'm going to let Linda answer that. That would fall under our operational report, which the way we structure the, the Director and City Librarian Report is. We've got kind of all the, the higher level sort of administrative management stuff, then we get to the operating and programming. And I'm going to let Linda, when we get to that point, Linda, I'll let you answer that.
Great.
Because I do think that is more programming than it is, you know, and, and that's kind of in the further down on the list of, of going through the report. So.
Okay, thank you.
Hence, okay, so anyway, does anybody have any questions about the budget monitor? We are seventy-five percent through the operating budget for this year. That is Attachment One, in the upper right-hand corner, the title is Budget Monitor Quarterly Report. So this financial report shows you the operating budget for the library division through the end of March. Which is essentially seventy-five percent way of the way through our annual operating. Really, really high-level, oh, Steve?
I just had, the only question I had was CENIC rebates, what's CENIC, C-E-N-I-C?
Oh, that has to do with our, and Linda, you want to, and unmute, and you can stay unmuted, please, Linda. Vera, yeah, go ahead. You, you, you're much better at that. I could probably model my way through, but go ahead.
CENIC is the umbrella program that we get our high-speed broadband internet through. It is the university internet that is, you know, that runs through the entire state of California. We get a rebate.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anyway, so the, the, the high-level takeaways from the quarterly is that the good, the good news is that passports are off the charts. And that we have already hit our, our revenue target for the year for the library division. We are at ninety-nine percent. You'll see that, there's that big yellow column in the, on the, on the report. Then to the right, there's that variance column, so it says, okay, what percentage of the budget have you matched or have you reached? Excuse me, so we're already at essentially, or slightly under our revenue targets, and we're, we have a whole nother quarter to go. On the expenditure side, which is the blue heading, we are well under. So this is not always a good thing, but this is reflective of the fact that we just don't have staff in place. To, to do the spending and procurement and/or, you know, that, that's part of it. But anyway, we are well under, fifteen percent under where we should be possibly for spending or at sixty percent of our, of our expenses. So the, the notes and comments are in the, on the right-hand column, and if you have any questions, I'll take them now. If not, we will move on to the donations monitor. Go ahead, Liz.
I know you're going to miss these questions. Kristin, I just give you kudos, especially on this comment section that just makes things really. Easier to interpret and know what to look at. And kudos to all the library staff doing this passport work. Where are all these people going? I just can't get over, I, I keep thinking sometime everybody's going to have their passports, but no. I have a particular question on line fifteen of the expenditures, equipment and repairs and maintenance. And the comments say it was higher in the second quarter because of AV repair in the birth room. And can you tell us what that was and how much it cost?
Sure, let me pull that up really quick.
And I know that, Linda, you have a question too. We'll get to yours after we've finished.
So the repair costed. A little over sixteen hundred dollars. And as far as what that was for. I have to ask Jennifer for the invoice. I don't have a copy of it in front of me.
I just, I know that that is something that we put on our CIP list to have that repaired. Excuse me, or upgraded, maybe replaced in some way. And I hate to see money continue to go out for repairs when that should be totally fixed and upgraded anyway. I hope that makes that project happen sooner.
Well, you know what? That is interesting that you even bring that up, Liz. I didn't know. Are you saying they, they've been, they've had past problems with this, with this HVAC system?
It's AV.
A, oh.
Audiovisual.
Oh, oh, not, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, AV, not AV, because you know, we had an AC issue. Yeah, I'm sorry, AV, not avian park. Because you know, we had an AC issue just about four weeks ago. So I'm sorry. That's where my, my bad.
We have a contract for that, for the HVAC, right?
Right. But we might need to get a repair. I'm sorry, my mind went AC because that was a big issue about a month ago. Kristin, my bad. Kristin.
So the AV repair that we had done, it was done back in December. And we had someone come out again, I want to say maybe two months ago, maybe a month or two ago, to revisit it. And they gave us a quote, but we decided not to move forward with that and spend any more money because we know that it's going to be completely redone with the CIP.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the notes that you have planned to spend the balance by year end. But when I look at lines 23 books and line 28 children's books, I don't see that comment. So are we planning?
For Linda.
Money, the city general fund money on books are most important thing.
Absolutely, our most important thing. And again, this requires support staff to, you know, we mean staff, we need bodies in to be able to purchase the books. Tara is, she is purchasing, she's been doing that since she returned. So that's great. And there's a plan of attack. So that way it's not just scattershot ordering. So we are, we are doing that. Right now, I'm the only person available to do the adult nonfiction ordering. You know, and Jeff orders the fiction books as he can. He's also managing circulations, which is, you know, that, the passport, that big revenue generator that falls under his umbrella. So right now, you know, we're doing the best that we can. But I don't know how much I will be able to spend, frankly, by the end of the year.
That's a real priority because the new titles are what bring patrons in and what bring them back.
We are absolutely aware, but you know, with, without bodies, Linda and Tara, everybody is forced to be on the front line and then they don't have the project work. And we absolutely understand that's why we're at a critically low level. And we've got to get those positions filled so we can do managerial supervisory work and purchasing and program development. And it's a vicious, you know, cycle. So we, we're doing our best to get those bodies to free up Linda and Tara and Jeff to do that, to spend that money. Spend money. Yeah, develop the, develop the collection. Linda, did you?
My question was on the donations monitor. And I, in looking at it even a little further, my, I was concerned about the Crane Art Gallery. We have the line item shows, you know, the, the, the revenue that has, has increased. And, you know, but the, what is it line? Those numbers are so small. 56? It doesn't, it doesn't show the, that increase. And now, and I'm looking a little closer, the adult donation amount on the donation monitor also doesn't show any increases. At what, is this all done at one point? I mean, right, because where I just very quickly looked back to the last one I could put my hands on right now was January. So there haven't been any, any changes on the donations monitor that, you know, the, the, the reserve fund at all this year. And is?
We have a response to that. Kristin?
So the money does not go into the reserve fund balance until after the books are closed for the year. So those numbers only get updated once a year. And I want to say it's in October or November when finance takes a report to city council to say, we've closed the books for the prior fiscal year. Here's all the money that was not spent from these funds. And this is what's going into the reserve as of end of fiscal year.
Okay, and the end of the fiscal year is the end of June?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And there's a little notation is in two point font that barely nobody can see, I'm sure. And it does say that it was, sorry, that it does show six, it's the very top of that little summary at the bottom. And 63021 is what the, the numbers are from, you know, last fiscal year, which, which, and this is a city finance function and or responsibility. We don't, we don't monitor this area. We, and that's a, it's the donations fund as a whole, and the finance director takes it to council once a year.
Okay, no, that, that answers my question. And I just also want to say I appreciated those comments that, that headed off a lot of questions.
Yeah, it's a time saver.
Yes.
Whatever time it takes to put those in, it saves us time.
Any other questions about the financials? We can move on to the, both the donations monitor, Liz?
I think the important parts for the board to keep watching are above line 20, starting with the revenue versus expense by area. And that's what Linda's talking about. So you've got $2,020 for Crane Art Gallery. If that's not spent, that's going to go down into that bottom line number 26. It seems to be 56, as Kristin said, after the close of the budget year. And it looks like you're going to have about $4,250 unspent in the other categories. If this continues, because you're going to spend, I think I read in the report, you're spending general fund money before you spend donations on books. So that $62,217 will go up, some in the Crane Art Gallery, some in line 57 for adult and some in line 58 for children's books. And I hope that we can get that money spent.
We like to spend money.
To do that. You've got $62,000 sitting there waiting for a great project. And you've got the foundation ready to have a major fundraiser. And then they're going to send out a mailing and they're going to get another $20,000. So you've got some great opportunities ahead.
And we are working to get our staffing capacity because really we're hitting a capacity issue to do the procurement of all this. And so, and that's our jobs is to get people on boarded that can help, you know, and it's part of their role and responsibility to do collections development.
If you had a position of book shopper, I could get that done in a day.
Do we need a consultant, one-time consultant?
I, I'm willing to help Liz.
That's a possibility. Let me pitch this out of the box thinking. Not a bad idea. Maybe, let me, let me, let us noodle on that, me and, me and Linda. So, okay, anyway, so if there's no more questions.
Linda has a question.
I just have a quick answer to Liz's earlier question regarding the passports. I have a good friend who's a curator at one of the smaller museums in London. They are inundated with American tourists right now.
Because the dollar is pretty strong. It's almost.
Is, is the lowest we've seen in a long time. So I would imagine they're feeling this throughout the continent, but London especially. Of course, they've got the Jubilee going on, but I, not too many Americans are invited. Just, you know, if you're Tom Cruise, maybe, but the rest of us, not so much.
Did anybody else have any other questions before we move on to just a quick review of the capital priority list on the budget monitor or donations monitor? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. We will move on to the, and thank you, Kristin, for all your hard work. As we have, you and I have developed those tools. And hopefully, everybody has seen that in the last, you know, several cycles here, we've really worked hard to improve these reports for ease of reading for you. And as Kristin and I have gotten our arms around these, the operating budget and donation budget. And big fist pound and high five to Kristin for all of her handy dandy Excel work and taking a lot of my suggestions and integrating them and your suggestions. So big kudos to Kristin. So moving on to the capital priority list, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it. It clearly shows the pending projects in our upcoming fiscal year as well as the next fiscal year. We put a description there that matches what the council has seen and the scope of the work. Does anybody have any questions about any of the items in the upcoming fiscal year, the top three? No? And then the ones underneath that are for the two years out, fiscal year 23, 24. And then we will be sure to, should, oh, and then they also, there's a kind of a memorializing of all the other capital projects for, from previous years. And we also have, sorry, I'm looking at the back page. Items, additional items under consideration, that might be the, when we work with the foundation on the new projects items. I'm on page three. Items moved to operational maintenance. Interior painting got completed, renovate the youth adult area. That's under consideration. Upgrade seating and furniture in the public areas. That is absolutely something Linda and I believe that needs to be looked at and figure out a funding source for that, whether we run it through the capital program on city operating or city CIP, or we look to partner with someone, preferably the foundation. And then the other one is that you might hear a little bit about. So this is more forward looking and the projects that Linda and I discussed with Cindy from the foundation. It had to do with considering an analysis that we would be doing fairly quickly in reference to the, all of the two reference desks as well as circulation to make it a one desk model. I don't know if any, if we've actually had this discussion, but you'll hear more about it. And Linda, do you want to elaborate just one or two quick minutes on what a one desk model would look like? And this would be a physical, you know, capital project for, for, to partner with the foundation. And we believe it'll improve operations. And it's really more of a trend in community libraries.
So a one desk model, just it means that there's a single service point. And when people walk in the building, they immediately have access to someone who can guide them to whatever resource it is that they need. And sometimes that resources people, right? So if they want to get a library card or need to do their passport, and it improves communication and teamwork amongst staff. So we can better coordinate to ensure continuous coverage. Or if we step away, we can let someone know that we've stepped away to manage whatever situation is happening.
So is that doing away with the location, the physical reference desk?
There are some ideas for what to do with the physical reference desk. But essentially, yes, all staff would be located in a single service area.
Which might modify the physical circulation area as well. I maybe, we don't know yet. We would get a consultant in.
Very dynamic idea. South Pasadena Public Library did that when they remodeled inside and they moved the physical reference desk out. I think certainly our library could do that and recapture the space for other kinds of use. And also the original interior designer of the Coral Public Library, Diane Lamb, she has talked to me about that, that the reference desk being separate from circulation is a thing of the past. And she had some ideas about that. So I hope you can use her talents.
Thank you for giving us her name. That, that's like institutional knowledge Jeff might have known, but a lot of this.
I'll give you her address and phone number and a picture of her house. I also just want to comment that on the CIP, the bathroom AV upgrade, thank you very much for moving that up a year because I know originally Public Works in preparing this had it an additional year out. And you took our comments back to them and you're making it happen, I think, on a better schedule. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. I took that to executive team before Michael left. So myself, Marcella, Michael and Paul, Finance Director, and we all talked about the, why we needed to prioritize this. So it wasn't, I did push it forward, but it was, they agreed, so.
I would like it if you would just scroll down, completed projects 2021.
Kristin, can you share screen maybe on this PDF?
While she's getting to do that, can I just thank Kristin, you guys for this document? Because I love having the history over there because, you know, as somebody who's been involved for years, you go, did we get, why aren't we doing that? Having it all in place is very easy to reference, as I'm sure Liz, you agree.
Yeah.
It is. And I just wanted to point out, oh, there you go, Kristin.
So Steve?
That's it. Little bigger, little bigger. So under, bigger. We see there the public use computer replacement, sidewalk repair, window tinting, bottle watering station, and the program and facilities management software. And what I want to point out is these are projects, both that were brought to the city for funding, starting with sidewalk repair, but also that were brought to another entity for funding. And the public use computer replacement was largely funded by the foundation. So that this list of projects represents all the big ticket projects, regardless of who we're asking to pay. It is not just a list for the capital improvement program that the city has. So as you're thinking of these big wonderful ideas, like maybe a remodeling of that first floor, the circulation desk, the reference desk, as you get down to being able to describe it, it should go on this list so that any entity, likely the foundation, but also could be a private donor, would be able to say, we would, could say, here are the things we need. Here are the things our various, you know, staff, the Board of Trustees agrees upon. These are things we need. And this is where you do not put the fountain for the courtyard or the, you know, jacuzzi. Because that's not an agreed upon type of project. That's what this document is really for. And I encourage you to keep using it in that way. Thank you. Thank you, Kristin.
Great work.
Yeah, thank you, Kristin. So if we don't have any other comments about the CPI list, we will move on to page 13 of 22 in your packet. And I'll go through this really fast. Steve mentioned the advisory body recruitment, the update there. We hope to be welcoming, and I'm serving on that interview and selection process starting tomorrow with the council liaisons advisory body training we talked about. One thing I would like to quickly mention is that we do appreciate our stakeholder groups providing us with sort of their operating update. Okay, because how, so we can all work collaboratively together and support each other and share, you know, transparent information and inform and educate everybody. So Cindy, put that, this together for me, for the foundation, middle of the page. We would like to get a report from the friends. We have asked in the past and we've just not really been successful. So whoever our liaison is to the friends, is that still, oh, it's going to be Lois.
Well, we'll determine it the next meeting. We don't got to see who the staffing is. Lois volunteered to do it, so.
Oh, okay. So we would really love to be able to share anything with you if they'd like to share it with us. And then we could provide it to you guys through this report because it's more operating because we do work with them on a day to day basis. And then the other thing that I think is really time sensitive and timely is the upcoming event. So at the bottom of the page, May 30th, a week from today, is the San Marino's Memorial Day Service. Many of you go. Many of you go, we're in the process of doing the, on, on the Recreation Division spearheads this with Mitch from the newspaper. And so that planning is in full swing and it's going to be, again, we've ordered great weather and it's going to be another lovely important, important event for the city. And it's, it's one of those really moving tributes. And, and so I encourage everybody, mark your calendar if you can join us at nine o'clock, Lacy Park next Monday. And then the only other thing, Fourth of July planning is going on. Library is also going to be helping to contribute and have a presence there. And then we get to operating reports, operational staff briefing. This is where on page 14, Linda, Jeff, Tara, they provide an update on the programs. And then the story or the summer reading program, Lindo give a verbal report on that. Because that is in the works. I don't see it in writing here, but you can give a, to follow back up with Linda on her question.
Linda, I'm so sorry. Can you remind me, you, you were asking about the, the flyer that went out? Or the flyer that's the, the little promo spot in the guide?
Yeah, I just, in looking at it, it didn't, it doesn't really give me much information. I mean, if I was a parent with a child and I wanted my child to be a part of this summer reading club. And then the other question too is, is it only for children? Or are, are adults encouraged to participate? Because I think in some families, if mom and dad are checking out a book and reading it, the child might be more inclined to do the same thing. I know some families work that way, not all of them. But it just, it, it just didn't give me what, really what I needed to know. Is there a place to sign up? Is there, you know, what, what are, are you encouraged to read X number of books? Or, you know, all of the, the, kind of the, the specifics, the terrific specifics.
Is there a flyer separate from what is in the guide, like a, a more comprehensive?
So on the flyer, it does say kids and teens log daily reading because the, the kids are going, the expectation is going to be that they read every day because everyday reading builds a habit. And then for adults, it says submit book reviews. So it's following the same format that it has followed in the past. We were not sure whether or not this would be a good time to include the link for Beanstack. Because once it goes out in the guide, we didn't want people going to a site that wasn't live yet. So we are going to be following up with that in the weekly briefings. Because it's just the, the timing of the guide and then the timing of the program, you know, they're, they don't exactly line up. And so we are going to be promoting that it, for kids, it is through Beanstack. But, you know, that's, that's a link on our website. So, and Tara, just so you know, is going today down and she's going to be doing some outreach at schools and stuff. So, you know.
Well, that's, you know, just to echo what Liz had said earlier, the school is out this week. And this is the very last opportunity to get something in that newsletter. And it's all well and good for Tara to go and talk to the kids at school. But somehow that message has to get relayed to the parents and not all kids will tell their parents.
Oh, but a lot of them will. She is very effective at getting the signups and going to the schools is probably your most tool. But Linda, I am on my computer right now and I see that the homepage is about the summer reading program. Yay. But the link, it, it's not an active link to Beanstack. So could you?
Because it's not live yet. So we can't, like if I, if we put up a link now.
But when I go to cityofsanmarino@beanstack.org, I get it.
Oh, so she did make it live.
And I can start clicking through, have you ever previously used? So I, I'm not clicking through from the Crowell website. I'm typing in cityofsanmarino.beanstack.org or com or something like that. So anyway.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to make that a live link.
So if families go to the Crowell Public Library homepage, they'll see it first thing. Which is great. And it's a darling theme and really cute little picture that is good for all ages and genders, which is hard to do, I must say.
Yes, yes. Yeah, the, the SRP themes are always a mixed bag. So this year I think they, they did a great job.
Well, I think if that kind of concludes our, our report, if anybody has any final follow-up to, to anything within the report, now would be the time. And if not, Chairman De Meyer, that concludes our report.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that agenda item number nine is not, we don't need to chat about that because you covered that in your report, the advisory body training? Oh, that's, that's a paperwork I had. I'm working on the old. Okay.
Yeah.
Terrific. So I wanted to thank everybody for their hard work and dedication and just to our departing members. Everybody, staff and, and board members, I really appreciate the effort you put into this because obviously libraries are really important to me. I'm kind of a, a book guy. And so I appreciate it. And you, you, you make the, the city of San Marino better by your hard work. And I'm very grateful. And thanks for your patience and thoroughness and everything. And we are adjourned. Till next month.
Steve, you're doing a great meeting and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Have a.
Have a great week, everybody.